Yours isn't muted.
Who isn't muted? Testy, I think we're okay. Nope, we're still.
She just needs to mute her computer.
That's what Malia is trying to do with Linda. Somebody with a phone. Thank you, Craig.
I am muted here.
Okay, that, I don't know if that does it, but I'm not echoing now. So I'm going to turn the recorder on. It sounds like we've got everybody muted. This is the Bluff Town Council Work Session. Today is September 19th, 2023. It is 9:09. Sorry for the delay. But we were having some technical setup issues. Let's do roll call.
Linda Sosa.
Jim Sayers.
May Collins, PMZ.
Ryan Hook, Penn Council.
Ann Leppen.
Brent Murray.
Erin Nelson, serving as Town Manager.
All right, so this morning, we're going to take a look at the ordinance. It was drafted and reworked by Planning and Zoning. We had a little bit of input as a council, and so this is the ordinance amending the Bluff Municipal Code to enact provisions governing the operation of aviation facilities. And there were some changes made after the last time we met. They changed language. It's highlighted, I believe. Some of the things are highlighted on your draft. Has everybody received a copy of the latest draft? So if you don't have the latest, let's get copies now. And you'll know you have the latest because yeah, it will have kind of a yellow highlighting in a couple places.
Erin, print a couple of those out for it. Because I don't have my latest copy with me. I thought I'd grab it, but I got the original.
I have it online, but I would appreciate it.
I can print a few and I can share it on my screen.
Yeah, I've got it on my screen.
I'll walk back and grab it, Erin, if you'll print one.
Yeah, give me just a second.
I prefer we not share it on the screen yet because I do better on paper. And I wanted to just go through a couple of quick things and then we can put it up on the screen, Erin. Thanks. So let's pause for a second here. Make sure everybody's got the right copy.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
For clarification, when you're referring to yellow, are you referring to what? So those are comments I put in yesterday when I was doing, or a couple of days ago when I was doing my homework.
Okay.
So it is on, for clarification, Amanda sent us an edited copy based on our discussions at our work session with you.
Okay.
And that's what's on our computers. Then I got to marking suggestions as we typically do on our worksheets.
Okay.
So those yellows are just the latest even. They haven't been talked about.
Okay, because this is the one that Erin sent out in the package.
Okay.
I think.
Right.
It just has the highlighted, but we don't have your comment. We don't have access to any of them.
Oh, from the Google Doc.
Right.
So the yellow or did?
I mean, unless you can tell.
No, no, you're right. The yellow, you're absolutely right. The yellow was in fact, you're right. Amanda putting in the questions we had.
Yeah, and I said.
Very good, very good.
But we don't have comments yet. Good. I mean.
Can one just, one talking at a time? What, do what?
I'm just saying that we don't, I don't have access to the Google Doc. I mean, I think I do, but I haven't gotten it to see it.
Okay.
So for clarification, we are all looking at the same one that Amanda sent, updated with a few yellow lines for questions.
Perfect.
Sorry about that.
No, that's okay. It's good to clarify because it seems that every once in a while, we're all working off a different document. I just want to be sure we're all on the same page. So we're waiting to get some paper copies from Erin.
Let me know if you need more than those three copies.
Okay, thanks, Erin. I think we'll be good.
There are four pages, the two-sided, you got two.
Yep, we're in there now.
Okay, so now we all have, in one form or another, the latest draft, which has some highlighting from Amanda Podmore. And the highlighting is related to questions that were raised but not resolved. So I'm not really sure how to start this. Does anyone have a starting point? Actually, maybe I'll just start with this. Does anybody see any obvious typos or things that you think we didn't talk about that are still left in this document? Well, I guess I'll, oh, go ahead, Marcia.
I'm just, when you said typo, the only one I think I wrote as a typo would be, well, two things. The first one, under definitions, the term hot air balloon. And the sentence came out funny when she wanted to add the word aerostat, which we asked to be in there just because it helps define that term. So I think the sentence should read, the term hot air balloon or aerostat means, or lighter than air balloons used to carry passengers. See how it can be done? So term hot air balloon or aerostat means lighter than air balloons used to carry passengers.
Okay, second one then?
The only other typo type thing I thought was if we're going to use the word airstrip versus airport. So my question would be, can we not do a search for the word airport and put in the word airstrip?
Okay, and in a clarification from the airport manager, it is called the Bluff Airport.
Aha, so as a title, airport, as a description, airstrip.
Yeah, it's Bluff Airport, FAA number 66B, which is 6653.
Okay, okay. In that case, then I would
Get rid of the strip.
Yeah, I would take back my discussion of the word airstrip and only use it if defined. Yeah. Are you kidding me?
Okay, and just for the purposes of making a record here, try to let everyone finish their sentence before we start talking because, no, that's, it, I do it all the time. So let's just try to make a clear record. Lou, you need to speak a little louder. So we're sure we get you. Pretend you're yelling at your kids or your dog.
Don't yell at me, kids. Oh, my dog.
Okay, your husband.
I don't know, who am I there?
Or we could yell at me then. Okay, so I'm just going to jump in with my first major concern with this. And I certainly expect disagreement. After doing a lot of conversations with the BLM and talking about how do you utilize the Bluff Airport for commercial aviation of any kind, there are no, there is no ability by the BLM to issue commercial permits that are not already in place for use on BLM land within the Bears' Years National Monument. This national monument plan, management plan, has been ongoing essentially since Obama. I have very, I don't know, I'm not even going to say it that way. I personally cannot say in an ordinance that we are zoning the airport for commercial aviation because it's not, it's like putting the adult entertainment section next to a school and zoning it for adult education, but you can't do it. You can't use it. I just think that it's not reasonable to say we're zoning the Bluff Airport. That being said, I think aspirationally, it should be in our ordinance to say if and when we are able to have an airport plan that the BLM, the FAA, whoever has to approve, and the management plan is in place where they lift the restrictions, then that would be an appropriate place to zone. But I, I just feel like it's throwing a bone that can't be chewed. Okay, Jim?
So this provision of what you're saying is aspiration exists in the current ordinance. Is that correct?
It does.
Okay, so essentially, you're saying that, and that you agree with this ordinance because there has to be some provision elsewhere for facilities. Is that correct?
I'm not saying that there has to be a provision elsewhere. What I'm saying is start, for me, the starting point was ruling out the airport as a zone because I know that Brandt was very adamant, and I don't disagree with you. I think the airport is the appropriate place to do things and look at developing it and getting grants, but we can't do it. And so I don't want Brandt to think that I can agree with him on putting the airport as a zone.
So which part of?
Just to finish, but the ordinance as, except for the highlighted areas that need clarification, I mean, it's essentially intact. It's workable. It was, covers the basis.
Marcia?
Well, answering in between that comes my part about the conditional use, which is the statement in the, in the ordinance says, should the town determine that the Bluff Airport is not available for use or development, aviation facilities, maybe developments, and then the words A2, A3, whatever we were discussing, becomes a conditional use question. However, when I left this meeting, our work session last time, I was discouraged to hear that no one likes conditional uses in their ordinances. So I'm at a loss to, because I completely agree with you. We don't have the airport in this discussion. So what do we do? So.
Okay, so Lou, did you have something you wanted to say before I?
Well, I was just wondering which part, you know, but like this, what Marcia's referring to is 030 conditional uses that says that.
Longer. I've got to get you on this computer.
Oh, wait, conditional uses 030 that says, should the town determine, what Marcia just read, does that get X-ed out or is that aspirational for at some point that we want to do it there?
So I think there's some work that needs to be done in language if we have a consensus on it. On that the airport, and I guess that's the question. Is there consensus that the Bluff Airport at this time cannot be zoned as a commercial aviation zone? And that it should be an aspirational with a little fine tweaking of the language?
That's the way I feel.
Yes.
Okay, okay, so we have a general consensus on that.
Well, it's impossible to do it right now besides the Bears' Years, the BLM.
It's not impossible. We could put a zone in there. We can write the zone. We can say the airport is zoned for that, but that's what we're saying. We don't even want to, you don't want to go down that path. You're right.
Because you can't.
Yeah, yeah. We can't do it.
You could zone it, you can't use it. That's what you're saying.
Yeah, so we're all, we have a consensus that the airport, while that might be the ideal spot, or it might be a spot, it's not doable, and let's not muck it up with that. All right, so the second piece is the conditional use. I don't care for conditional uses. I think it opens a door for contention. Like, I wanted to do this in this spot, and I got to do it, but my neighbor doesn't get to do it. I think if we're going to pick, if we're going to use the zone, we should pick a zone and have it and not have conditional use. Now, again, I'm one person, so let's hear from everybody else about what you, what you all think. Linda?
Because we have to treat, everyone was saying, if we gave this conditional use, we would have to give it to others. I mean, it has to, kind of like what you're saying. We would have to be open to give it to others. We can't pick and choose. I mean, we can pick and choose sites and things, but conditional use is not just for one situation. It opens to others.
Yes, it is absolutely for one individual site. It is not open to others. Conditional use is specifically designed to talk about a specific site. It is specific to, if you came to me and said, I want to put a, an aviation facility on Mulberry Street between two houses, we could say, we can't give you a conditional use permit there because no matter what conditions we lay out, it does not fit into the use of the property. If you came to me and said it for commercial two on a site that had acreage, and we said, yes, it works, doesn't mean commercial two down the street will work because that was already used. The whole thing about conditional use is to make it work for a specific site with specific conditions. You may build an aviation facility as long as you don't have a tie-down that goes too far. You may have it as long as whatever those conditions are, are site-specific, and they are not precedent-setting. For other sites. I think that's exactly how it's defined.
Okay, so I have a problem with the A2 and A3 zoning districts because Bluff, and I brought our little map, as you can see, we're all very tiny, teeny. We're in a zone that's very small. We all live together. We all border probably every zone. Every residential borders a commercial, and every commercial borders an ag, and an ag borders a commercial and a residential, and so on. So I think we need to zone it as Bluff. If your zone fits, if your piece of property fits the use, then that would be the conditional use, because it doesn't need to be in one particular zone.
You could say, sorry, you could say aviation, aviation facility is now a conditional use of all zones, and therefore, no one gets it unless they specifically meet the criteria of the site they're asking for.
Right, that's a good summary of what I have been thinking because there's not any one zone that satisfies it or yanks it out of possibility.
I'm not willing to say residential zones. I'm not willing to do that. I'm willing to bend on the conditional use based on Marcia's explanation, assuming Marcia's absolutely correct.
Well, we can, we have to put it on the Chris list.
It is.
The ranking list this morning.
And that was, you know, that's certainly something that there's questions about. So I think residential becomes very problematic.
That could be a good way to do it, Lannan, is to say, there's so much open land that's got different zones on it that might work. Residential not as good as standard.
And that was one thing I remember in the PMZ discussions originally was that private recreational, so a residential property could put their own strip in. And they seem to think that that would be okay. I didn't. I would still want to have that conditional use. I don't think you can just say, if you have private residential, you can land whatever you want.
Okay.
You know, so I think they all need to be conditional, no matter if it's recreational or what that type of thing needs to be.
And we talked, we sort of laughed about that at our PMZ work sessions of the new private aircraft they're developing now that land next to your house and, you know, land vertically and take off and stuff. And so it's like, someday we're all going to have one of those.
And people can come in and, you know, these second homeowners and stuff, you know, you'll have them landing everywhere. So I think we need to consider that we all live together and all of them are under the same regulations.
Well, I actually am in favor of no commercial aviation within the boundaries. I mean, you know, if we're going to get down and talk about what we really think, I think it's too, we're geographically with the Bluffs, the benches, assuming we have a bench, and we don't have a commercial airstrip up on the bench from the county. With the wildlife corridor, with the river, with recreation on the river, I really don't feel like there's a place for any commercial aviation. And I know that we've had these discussions about whether or not private aviation fits in this. But right now, we're sort of focused on the commercial. We should probably stay focused on commercial. And I don't think there's a place for commercial, but I think somebody, somebody over there.
Does that include the airport?
Not, no. How I envision it is that there's no place that we can currently zone, zero. No A1, no A3, no C123, no industrial, no residential, no. There's no zone. Right now, Bluff, in my opinion, is not situated to have a commercial air facility, Brandt.
If you follow my line of thought, which has been pretty obvious the last few days, and I feel the same way. The airport would not be ready for commercial until a commercial plan was implemented, which I told you I thought would take 15 years down the road. You have to get the charade or the feasibility study. So I feel the same way. Bluff's not ready for commercial aircraft. And, you know, I pledge to work toward that with a good plan and that sort of thing. But today, we're not ready for commercials here in this valley.
Marcia, is the, so I just want to tell people listening or watching, we have Craig online doing the YouTube, but we also have a recorder that we use to use to post to UCHL Public Notice. And we're passing that around, so if I'm not sitting here, I'm moving to pass it. Go ahead, Marcia.
Just in answer to the idea that we're not ready, the whole point of the word planning and, or the idea of planning and zoning is planning. And we need to plan for the fact that things are happening. And we just got rocked upside the head with the first of the planning with a request for commercial aviation. So that's what started all this. So, yeah, it's nice to think we're not ready because we're a sleepy little town, but we're not a sleepy little town. We are a town that works by having people come to us to do things, and I'm not even.
I don't need a lecture.
But, no, okay, I know you don't need a lecture. I'm just saying that that's what we're doing here, is planning, and is saying that we are ready to do something. It may be that we're ready to vote no on the whole thing. That may happen. But in my opinion, it's better to vote, here are some good plans.
I've asked Chris to join us at 9:45. So that's why I've looked at my phone because Erin is working on getting Chris in. So Marcia, let me go back to what you were saying. Are you, are you in favor, what exactly would you like to see? Let's start with that.
Sure. I would like to see a conditional use plan for offering a chance for commercial aviation. I'm right in between the no residential and all, and all zones because I kind of agree with Lannan saying, if we have the town open to ideas, then something could work somewhere. So I kind of like that approach. My thought is just what I said. Planning means we're planning for things that are going to come. And I think conditional use is an excellent way to go about that. If you'd like clarification from Chris, I think that's great because then we can all say the same thing. If I'm wrong, I'm wrong. I just know that conditional use means that site. And if someone were to come forward with a specific site, we get to say yes or no, that's perfect. I think there's a lot of opportunities if more things become.
Jim?
If the airport is not available due to BLM, is that, is it therefore true that all of the BLM land that is within, I assume, A1 here, is closed to any commercial aviation?
My understanding is it's specific to all BLM land within the Bears' Years National Monument. So if you have BLM land outside of the monument, which we do, you could do it on BLM land if they had it in their management plan, which gets back to the management plan. If they have that use in their management plan for that area, then you could apply for the, just like the airport was, I assume, developed on the BLM land because there was a use specific for that.
Okay, thank you.
Malia?
Regarding the conditional uses, if we were to go with what Marcia is saying and kind of in between what, yeah, what was being said, would we be able to put, or would it be in the ordinance what we're actually saying the conditional uses are? So that people can then know if they are exempt, if they can look at it and say, okay, I don't follow them within these conditional uses? Or is that something that we determine at the time?
Enough.
Of, okay.
Conditional use is that application.
That application.
So you can't say a conditional use will include, you know, tie-downs to the left or something like that because that won't make sense for everything. So conditional to that site.
And see, that's where I think it just gets murky, messy, and confusing.
That's definitely where somebody could jump in and just say, well, that's just because you don't like me. Or, you know, that's where somebody can just jump in and say, you have no good basis for that or, but you approved so-and-so because they are in favor of whatever else. I feel like I agree that it is definitely a murky area to approve conditional uses.
And if I, oh, go ahead.
Well, I was just going to say, one of the conditional uses would be how many times a month? Or how many times a day? Or the volume of the noise coming out of your machine? Like, I mean motorcycles, what if you had a motorcycle operation going on in a commercial zone and you started up 10 Harleys 14 times a day? I mean, you know, it's, it.
And, and I'm sorry, that is in the ordinance, and you're right, there are some definitions of it like that, but they're not specific. If the submittal of the conditional use, as written in our sample, our draft ordinance, says, please give us these things, the aviation, detailed aviation facility, the FAA, the aviation narrative, that's part of that condition that you meet them, and then we get to say, okay, you just said you were going to take off twice a day. That's all we're allowing. That's what I think. So you can use these submittal descriptions as part of what you're looking for. Then you can actually be somewhat more specific to a site as well.
And I, I suppose we should ask somebody more airport knowledgeable. But it seems to me like the FAA is going to have a lot to say over a commercial operation, no matter where it is.
You know, you have to meet all requirements.
Yeah, but it just seems like they'll, they'll have some pretty strict requirements, I would hope, of where they can approve a site.
Let me see if Erin has been able to reach out to Chris. And part of, part of scheduling today was trying to find a time that Chris was available that fit with everybody's schedule as best as I could figure it out, so.
I've reached out, but I haven't been able to reach him. I can try to give him another call.
call.
Okay, thank you, Erin. No, part of the, well, doesn't matter. I, we sent him the information, but I think that, and I had talked with him, but I had said nine o'clock, and he wasn't on the call. So that's why I said to Erin, go ahead and try for 9:45, and that would give us time to talk.
So another question, oh, no, great. Another question that I think then is highlighted is the 1,200 feet to the 2,000 feet. I don't know that that would be in, in my opinion, I'm not sure that should be in the ordinance, but more under that conditional use, because who is your neighbor, what, you know?
So Lou, are you looking at 060B?
Yes.
Okay.
060B and C, because we have those two, you know, conflicting spacing from noise-sensitive land use, so I guess that's where the decision who your neighbor is, but 1,200 feet's...
So, go ahead.
Yeah. One of the reasons that I think people are in favor of using the airport, and correct me if I'm wrong, is because of its distance from residential areas. It doesn't bother anybody. So why, then, are we struggling with 1,200 or 1,000 feet when we've got all this land, and we could put something out in a conditional use status that is as distant or pretty close to as distant as the airport, which is what, a couple miles, or a mile, what is it, a far?
Four.
It's four miles out, and you're, the measuring point is from where?
Well, I know that at Sand Island, it says you're four miles from town, so I imagine it's, but I try to imagine it's maybe town center.
So roughly four miles. So what would, Jim, what would you say?
Whatever that distance is, or approximately, it doesn't have to probably be four miles, but I, it seems to me three miles is, would get us to the same condition that we see at the airport, which is so far from residence, residential areas, that it, it's not going to bother anyone.
So saying that... The use for commercial aviation would be... Three miles or greater from the center of town, and then regardless of what the zone is?
Well, that would effectively obviate the problem of zoning, and my sense is that would probably limit to the bench.
So, playing the devil's advocate, we lose 9,500 acres to Sitla. Sitla sells that property to Bruce Baird, and he has a developer in Salt Lake City. And he figures out a way to develop that property with some kind of housing, some kind of heavy something. And then you've got bluff dwellings right underneath it, and they're not gonna be subject to it. I... I don't know. Or what if we keep it, and we decide to let it be developed with some kind of industrial stuff, and then we change the zoning?
Were we talking about the airport, or were we talking about?
The bench, the benches. I do like the idea of three miles and just let it, let it go. It makes it easier.
Well, it's a compromise. I mean, it, it allows for commercial aviation. It does the same thing the airport does currently, which keeps it, you know, I think that's why a lot of people in town are very skeptical, so, because it's so close, because the airport is distant, and anything else would be closer.
Are we bound to create something for this request? I mean, we could just say commercial aviation's not available in bluff currently?
Right, we can say that. We can say, and that, that's an option.
It seems to me, rather than try to, you know, create conditions that satisfy the thing, if we're not ready for commercial aviation in bluff, which I feel like we're not, just, we're not ready, now, we'll, you know, we'll pledge to start working on, you know, an airport plan, you know, more vigorously, but this is not a problem that our board created, it's just a problem that's kind of brought to us for, for solution. And so I don't feel like I'm incumbent on me to do, to create any kind of zone that just some person wants, if it's against the benefit of the town. And I feel like it is.
Good morning, Chris.
Good morning.
Yeah. Jim?
I, I agree with Brant to some extent, but we did boundary the town, we devised boundaries for the town that are quite substantial, as we, we know. And to say that there is no room within that space for commercial aviation, I think is kind of going to be seen, at least, if not in fact, as sort of a disservice to the town. I mean, we've got, we've got an airport that we're perfectly willing to use if it were available, yet we're unable to, within all of this large space that we have, to designate a three-mile, you know, three miles from the center of town for, for an airport. I, I think that kind of begs some questions, you know. So, so I, I agree with you in principle, but, you know, the reality is, people want commercial aviation.
Just the idea of being up on the bluff bench takes that noise factor out of down here.
Quite a bit, yes it does. It's not within the canyon, you don't get that F or anything.
So we have Chris on the line, and we don't have anyone here, but I'm gonna shut doors, and then I'll entertain a motion, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session. Trying to figure out the best way to do this might be if we could grab another, Marcia?
Just a clarification, Mayor, you as a team need to go into, but does that mean P and Z will lead and not get the answers to a couple of?
That's a good point. Let's do the questions first.
Just a couple of aviation questions?
No, that's perfect. No, that, that's perfect. But if I could, I think it might be easier if we put a table here and put the computer here, and so we're sure we're picking up the sound for everybody on the questions, and then... I think that might work better. Thanks for that reminder, Marcia.
Yep. I just wanna know more about this.
No, I think that, that's exactly why we have Chris here to answer questions.
Maybe angle it down a little bit. Do we wanna, yeah?
You don't wanna see the ceiling?
Not really. I wanna see myself.
Is that it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Now it's just right on me. Is that okay? I didn't, I've screwed my camera on for a reason.
Okay, so Chris, if, I'll just have to start with Linda, go around the table and see who has questions. Linda?
I don't have, well, the questions I'm interested in are the variants, conditional use, and, but I'm just more curious in his, in his answers to Marcia.
Go ahead, Jim.
No questions?
Chris, good morning. It's Marcia from Planning and Zoning, and the discussions that we've had, some are, they're great discussions, because everybody has a different opinion. One of the things that we can't quite agree on is a definition of conditional use with regard to, my answer is, conditional use is site-specific. It does not set a precedent for you having to use conditional use, or having to approve conditional use for everyone who then comes forward. So if we're dealing with a helipad request, we deal with that one specifically. The next person who comes along does not mean we have to give it to him, because we've already done one. That is my interpretation of conditional use, that it is site-specific, and we need clarification, please.
Okay. A, a conditional use permit is a site-specific land use designation that says that a particular use may be acceptable in a given zoning designation or set of zoning designations. The law in Utah is that a conditional use permit must be granted under certain circumstances, and those are when conditions can be developed, which would address the negative externalities or the negative impacts associated with a given use. Then the conditional use permit should be approved, and it's an adjudicatory process, meaning that the, the land use authority, which in most cases is the town council or city council, makes a determination to approve a particular use, subject to conditions that, in its judgment, would mitigate the adverse effects from a particular use. I'll tell you that the process is fraught in that courts in Utah are sometimes split on the subject. I've certainly seen situations where the appellate courts in Utah view with skepticism the denial of a conditional use permit. And so, there's, there's some in the municipal law field in Utah who would say, don't, don't even use that tool. It's too uncertain, creates problems. And so one alternative, and is that local governments may simply say, a given use is acceptable in a particular zone, provided that the applicant can meet specific criteria in the ordinance. And, and that's, sounds like another kind of conditional use, which is just a use subject to conditions. But yeah, it's, it is a site-specific permit. It doesn't, the grant of a permit in one setting doesn't necessarily obligate the town or any local jurisdiction to grant one in another situation, in terms of precedent setting. However, if, if an applicant can meet the criteria, and, and conditions can be devised that mitigate the offside impact, or the impacts, the negative impacts, then it should be approved.
So it does open up a little more opportunity, which is the argument of some here, saying that you don't wanna give too many opportunities. On the other hand, it does restrict those opportunities to mitigating the negative impact.
Yeah. You know, and what I'll tell you is that there are a variety of tools that local governments can use when they're concerned about proliferation of a particular type of use. So for example, we see this in things like liquor stores, or other, other uses that maybe, that they wanna cap, for whatever reason, on a numerical basis. And so, some local jurisdictions will say, of a particular permit type, we will limit the total number of permits that will be granted to X. Sometimes that is an approach. Or the approach is to say, these particular uses will be confined to a particular geographic area. I mean, there are a number of zoning tools that we can use, but, but the issue of proliferation, that is, we may have too many of one particular type of use in too many locations, then that would be adverse. That is something we can address through zoning criteria.
So another use might be, another way to do this might be not to have conditional use, but to have specific zones with meeting criteria.
That's right. So for example, you could say, and if we're talking about aviation uses, you could say, an aviation use will be permitted in this particular zoning district, provided, and you said, a minimum lot size, a minimum setback, a minimum height and bulk restriction, maybe other criteria that would be specifically tailored towards mitigating what you expect to be the adverse effects from a particular use. And that, and that would be a use by right if the applicant can satisfy those criteria.
Thank you. I'll pass the mic. Malia?
Chris? It's Brant.
Hi, Brant.
May I speak?
They skipped me, man. Hello, Chris. Thank you so much for meeting with us today. I know that we have a question about the definition, if shielding and buffering is something, I'm jumping down to our 060, section D, just a question of if shielding and buffering has a general definition, or if that is something that we need to define?
I, I think the more precision we can bring to our ordinances to define a particular requirement, the better. And I've seen some ordinances that go to the point of saying, you know, you will have trees of this diameter, measured breast height, this many per linear feet. I mean, you can, you can provide a very, a specific and detailed requirement for shielding and buffering, or you can talk about fencing, a fence, you know, up to six feet high, whatever. There are many ways to define that. Or you can, you can leave that somewhat vague and have the decision-maker have some discretion as to what is a reasonable degree of shielding and buffering. Because if you have a very large parcel of land, shielding and buffering might be different than if it's, you know, a postage stamp lot. I generally say that the more, and this is generally the trend in Utah, the more precision we can add to our ordinances to define these terms, the better. But it doesn't always work in every situation.
Thank you so much.
Chris, I have a hypothetical question for you. Let's say the airport, or the helipad is, is granted, and there's one built, and then the hotel's sold, and the heliport is sold. And what are the ramifications of us trying to transfer a conditional use for a heliport onto a second owner?
Oh, generally, a conditional use permit runs with the land, and it's freely transferable to successive owners. And that means that the, the purchaser of a property would have the same rights to use that permit, and be bound by the same requirements of that permit as, as the original grantee.
Thank you.
I don't have any questions that are different than these guys.
That's my best recorder back. Chris, I think the only one that I have is under 060B and C. There are two different footage as described. One is, in B is 1,200, and in C is 2,000. Is there a reason that they were different?
Well, let me see if I can bring that up, or, I apologize. Well, uh, let me see if I could bring that up or, I apologize. Six, uh...
Performance standards.
Yeah, okay, so we've got a, a, a minimum kind of setback, um, from adjacent property boundaries. So not less than two hundred feet from adjacent property boundaries and public rights away, and not less than one thousand two hundred feet in the original draft from a noise-sensitive land use. So for a, for example, um, the way that was crafted is that, um, you have to have a minimum, uh, uh, setback of two hundred feet from, let's say, the nearest public highway. Um, but if you have a house that's, uh, that's right on the other side of that street, um, and a how, a residential dwelling is classified as a, as a noise-sensitive land use, then there would be a larger setback that would apply there. And the thinking is that, uh, we know that sound attenuates over distance. Uh, sound impacts from aviation can be significant. Um, uh, you know, a helicopter taking off or an airplane taking off, um, may have seventy, eighty, ninety decibels of, of noise immediately adjacent to where it's taking off from. But as you move away, that, that sound attenuates and, and becomes lower. That, there's, there's no magic, um, uh, in that one thousand two hundred foot number. It is, uh, based on some research that I did as to, um, sound effects, um, from looking at some other ordinances. But a lot depends on the type of aircraft, how noisy it is and, and, um, and other factors, such as the ambient noise that exists. Um, and so, uh, so that one thousand two hundred feet, that's was just my attempt to try to craft something that was workable. Uh, in C, um, if it's within, if the property boundary is within two thousand feet, um, uh, what I specified there is some effort to try to, uh, determine ambient noise testing or, or to, to perform an ambient noise test before the use comes into play. And to do that at the property line, so that we could try to get a handle on what, what the actual conditions are, um, that, that people face, uh, in terms of existing noise, um, before the use comes into place, or into play. And we do it at the, at the property boundary. And again, this is in an effort to try to, try to determine what the actual conditions on the ground are. And then I've also specified that we would require a noise test involving the type of aircraft to be used, um, at the proposed facility to determine aircraft noise emissions. And sometimes that information's available from manufacturing data. So for example, a, you know, a Bell two twenty helicopter might have a, a certain number, uh, that it, it, uh, emits at, uh, takeoff and landing. Uh, and so what I did beyond that was to say that if the, um, if the, if the noise levels are greater than a, than a specified threshold, that you may, uh, uh, attach conditions to the approval that might limit the number of flights. So for example, if you had a very, very noisy aircraft that takes off, um, from a facility, you might want to limit the total number of, of takeoffs and landings, um, or the hours of operation, um, uh, in a given day, to try to mitigate the to, overall impacts, um, that would, uh, flow from that activity. And again, it, it, this is going to be, it's going to require some effort. Uh, it's going to require some effort to try to determine what the baseline conditions are and what the actual noise impacts are likely to be. Um, and then attempting to, uh, implement those, try to reduce the impact on neighbors.
Any other questions from counsel? Luanne, did you have one?
No, I guess not.
All right. So is there a motion to go into a closed session?
So may I?
Um, Madam Mayor, as Vice Chair of, um, P and Z, I thank you for letting us be part of your morning and we shall depart, so you can go into closed session.
Can I ask a quick clarifying question? Are we coming back to this meeting or are we, um, closing after the executive session? For our people online?
So what we're going to do is, um, close out this session and then go back, go in on the executive session link. Is that what you're asking?
And, and is the purpose of the executive session to, uh, to confer with legal counsel on, um, matters of legal strategy and/or, um, threatened or pending litigation?
That's correct.
Are we coming back into this regular meeting after the executive session?
No, we are going to close this off. We are adjourning this one and then going into the executive session. And when we close that out, we will not be talking about anything else.
Luanne? I just want to make sure online, we have one of the P and Z that is online. I just want to make sure because he had his chance to comment or who that is online, uh, as a P and Z member.
So, uh, do you have any questions at this time? No. Okay, so we are going to shut off this recorder. You didn't actually vote. Thank you. All in favor say a "a". So we're going to shut this down. I'm turning off the...
Chris, I'll send you that executive meeting link directly.
No, fine.
Okay, great. Thank you.